Can you please turn on your microphone?
All right, I want to call the council meeting to order. If we all please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, towards the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice above all.
Thank you. How do you want to take a roll call before I read our fancy Mass General Law language?
Certainly. Counselor Laflambeau.
Present.
Counselor Griffin.
Here.
Counselor O'Brien.
Here.
Counselor Eager.
Here.
Vice President Clune.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor Powers. Counselor DiStefano.
Here.
President Sullivan.
Here, thank you. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20, please note that tonight's meeting is being both video and audio recorded. Anyone here in the audience recording the meeting? Would that be Abby Taylor from the West Springfield Record? Anyone else? All right, thank you. Okay, approval of the agenda, I'll move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion on the motion? Seeing no one go to a vote, Counselor DiStefano.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Vice President Clune.
Yes.
Counselor Eager.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Counselor Griffin.
Yes.
Counselor Laflambeau.
Yes.
I vote yes. I believe we have a public hearing in the offering. Counselor Laflambeau, you want to open that, or would you like me to?
I can do it, thank you. Move to open the public hearing on the proposed zoning ordinance amendment to Chapter 300, Table 52, Table of Allowed Uses.
Moving seconded, we have a public hearing open. Anyone in the audience like to address the counsel on this issue? If you do, please come to the microphone, state your name, address, and then you get five minutes.
Good evening, my name is Todd Katus, I'm the treasurer at the Majestic Theater here in West Springfield, 131 Elm Street. The reason I'm here is I had read in the West Springfield Record last week that there were some changes proposed and went before the planning board as to the CVS parking lot, building that entire area. And I wanted to just make you aware of that. Those of us at the Majestic Theater have no concerns about ordinances and zoning, we don't. What I've been talking about since November of 2019 is the Central Business District parking concerns. That's what we, that's our biggest concern, because the Majestic Theater has no parking. So I, I've come to here this evening because I felt that we should at least have that discussion, make you aware of it, because I think that some of these decisions and some of these changes may be impacting our ability to have access to parking. We have good neighbors that have allowed us to park for years in the back of CVS. Now we have new neighbors in the beauty salon behind us that have allowed us to park, the dentist beside us allowed to park, the Siremi family allows us to park in some of their areas as well. But I am concerned that some of these changes might impact the ability for the Majestic Theater and the other Central Business District businesses to have access to this parking. I only learned in that article in the West Springfield Record that CVS does not own that park, that, that building, that structure. I had not in the past known that. Over the years since 1997, whenever I've had any issues with parking, I've gone across the street and talked to the local manager of the CVS, and we've worked things out, and they'd never told me at any time that they didn't own the building. So, I'm sorry for not knowing that, but now that I've been aware of this, and I think these changes may impact that, I think we should at least make you aware that the Majestic Theater is concerned as to how these changes may impact our ability to access parking. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing no other comments or folks to present to us, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, moving seconded, further discussion on the motion to close the public hearing? Seeing none, Counselor Laflambeau.
Yes.
Counselor Griffin.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Counselor Eager.
Yes.
Vice President Clune.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano.
Yes.
I vote yes, the public hearing is closed. Public comment, we kind of just had some, seeing no one else in the audience, we'll move along to approval of the minutes. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the regular public and public hearing minutes of September 20th, 2022. All right, I'll move it, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the minutes as presented? Okay, seeing no one go to a vote, Counselor DiStefano.
Abstain, absent.
Counselor Smith.
Abstain, absent.
Counselor Clune.
Yes.
Vice President Clune, Counselor Eager.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Counselor Griffin.
Yes.
Counselor Laflambeau.
Yes.
I vote yes. Unanimous with two abstentions. Any communication to come before the counsel, from any of the counselors? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go to our student rep. Sam, do you have any words of wisdom for us this evening?
I do, I do have a couple of things to talk about today. I'd like to start off by first mentioning that the STEAM program has begun in the high school library. The program runs right after school, and it allows students, it gives students the opportunity to complete their homework and/or participate in fun activities in our school. I would also like to talk about, mention again, that the high school was awarded state funding to support 25 STEM program internships. These internships provide our students with an amazing opportunity to gain valuable work experience for the fields they're interested in. Most students at our school are still successfully following the four pillars of the Westside Way, which include acting with integrity, showing compassion, learning resilience, and striving for excellence. I would like to also mention that the West Springfield football team had their first home game this past Friday. Unfortunately, we lost 33 to 12 to Northampton, but we expect to come back. For those interested in purchasing a school yearbook right now, you're able to log into the West Springfield High School website and purchase one. Groups such as Key Club and National Honor Society have successfully completed their first community service project by helping out the Lions Club International at the Biggie. The second wide, the schoolwide student government has also begun their homecoming event, which is planned for October 20th. This month, the West Springfield High School will be, will be hosting a college fair on October 27th. This is a great opportunity for all students who wish to pursue a higher degree of education, and to receive information from dozens of colleges around the area. As an extra, I would also like to mention that many of our students at our schools would like to see the Raps come back for school lunch. It's something that's been talked about amongst everyone at the school, so it would be nice if we could have more school lunch options.
All right, thank you. Anyone have any questions for Sam? Okay, thank you, Sam, appreciate it. Oh, Counselor Griffin.
I don't have any questions for Sam, and I thank you, Sam, but I did have a communication.
Oh, absolutely.
And I apologize because it slipped my mind, but as you know, and you're certainly a member of the Hall of Fame Committee, we have the selections for the Hall of Fame for this year, and the athletes are Rudy Spano, Mike Delaney, Dave Kulick, Heather Clorer, Dave Garing, and Kathleen Henry. The coaches are Paul Taylor, congratulations Abby to your dad, and William Quigley. 1975 soccer, New England champs. 2016 boys' baseball, Ron Nivone, longtime hockey advocate in, in West Springfield, and Judy Sawyer, who knows more about athletics.
Janice.
Janice Sawyer, I'm sorry, I, that's my fault. I, I do that all the time.
That's okay.
With many different athletes, I butcher their names, and Janice Sawyer, who's in the athletic department and has been for many, many years. So congratulations to all of them, and we'll, we'll get that out to, to the, to the press soon.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it, Counselor. Okay, unfinished business, Counselor Eager, you're up.
Move to waive the formal reading and approve the proposed amendment to traffic rules and orders, Section 400-23, commercial vehicles and trailers, to establish a, a commercial vehicle, a parking restriction on Main Street from Cottages to Colton Ave.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Counselor, how did your, your committee vote on this?
We, we voted on amended language, and it was unanimous affirmative.
Okay, just so everyone knows, amended language is what was?
We will, we will narrow the focus to in, right in front of the school and the Boys and Girls Club, leaving the property between the two as normal.
Okay, great, thank you. Further discussion? Okay, we ready to vote?
Move to amend?
What's that? I thought you just moved that.
No, I did not. I did, you asked about the debate, and then, yeah, so. Yeah. Move to, to amend the language?
Okay, second?
Second.
Further discussion on the proposed amendment to the original language?
Am I supposed to read off the, the proposed changes right now? Okay. Under Section A, no driver shall stand in a commercial vehicle or trailer having a gross vehicle weight of 2,000 pounds or more for more than one hour between the hours of 6:00 PM and 6:00 AM, any day, on any day or any time on a sun, a Sunday, except for loading and unloading. And then for B, we have no driver shall park or stand on any commercial vehicle or trailer of any weight rating on the following streets or parts here, there of any time, and there's a table with the entry Main Street, Side East, location from a point 45 feet southeast from the intersection of Cottages Street and Main Street, hence southerly 103 feet point, 100, I'm sorry, 301.22 feet along the curb line of Main Street to a point 76.14 feet northwesterly from the intersection of Main Street and Mosley Avenue, and the second entry, Main Street, Side East, from a point 197.1 feet southeasterly from the intersection of Mosley Avenue and Main Street, hence southerly 353.79 feet along the curb line of Main Street to a point 109.29 feet northeasterly from the intersection of Main Street to Colton Ave.
All right, thank you. Any questions or further discuss? Counselor Powers.
I mean, yeah, I, I would prefer to keep the parking at the edge of the street instead of bringing it back in, I know that's what the amendment's purpose is. You know, this is for safety, and I think bringing it up to the exit and entrance for the Boys and Girls Club, you know, still creates a safety hazard, so I think it should be back, but that's all we want to know.
You think it should be broader range, is it? Oh, okay.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Other discussion? Counselor Eager?
Now, the purpose of the amendment, which we, I would thank our town engineer for actually writing, is parking's tight, and we want to keep these establishments clear so people can unload, offload, and that was a primary purpose. If we take too much parking away, we're going to have undesirable effects elsewhere. So, and we, we, we started seeing this on Day Street when we eliminated parking elsewhere. So, I, I want to keep this as tight as possible to avoid any unintended consequences while still respecting the pickups, the need for pickup of children at both the Boys and Girls Club and, and the school.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Ready to vote on the proposed amendment to the initial motion? Okay, seeing no one go to a vote, Counselor Laflambeau.
Yes.
Counselor Griffin.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Counselor Eager.
Yes.
Vice President Clune.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
No.
Counselor DiStefano.
Yes.
I vote yes. Eight in favor, one opposed, the proposed amendment passes, and now we'll vote on the main amended motion. Any discussion on the main amended motion? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Oh, Counselor Powers.
Well, no, my note will be based upon what I just said.
Okay, thank you. Counselor DiStef, are we ready to vote? Anyone else? All right, go to a vote. Counselor DiStefano.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
No.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Vice President Clune.
Yes.
Counselor Eager.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Counselor Griffin.
Yes.
Counselor Laflambeau.
Yes.
I vote yes. Eight in favor, one opposed, the motion passes. Now, do we have another one, Counselor Eager?
Let's see, we have 6B, move to waive the formal reading and approve the proposed amendment to the traffic rules and orders, second, 400-11, prohibited parking on certain streets to establish a no parking zone on the northwest side of Colton Avenue from Main Street to a point 125 feet northeast.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, how did your committee?
We voted unanimous affirmative.
Unanimous affirmative, okay. Other discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, ready to vote? Counselor Laflambeau.
Yes.
Counselor Griffin.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Counselor Eager.
Yes.
Vice President Clune.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano.
Yes.
I vote yes, unanimous, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Eager. Counselor Laflambeau.
Move to waive the formal reading and approve the proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance, Section 300, Table 52, Table of Allowed Uses, Business Zoning Districts, and add the following language to the standards and conditions column for convenience store. In the Central Business District, a convenience store shall not be located within 500 feet of another convenience store, measured door to door. In Section 300, Table 52, Table of Allowed Uses, Business Zoning Districts, add the following language to the standards and conditions column for all other retail establishments. In the Central Business District, the gross floor area shall not exceed 5,000 square feet.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, further discussion. Counselor Laflambeau, I believe you had a subcommittee meeting on this? What was the position?
Oh, one in favor and one opposed.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion on the motion? Counselor O'Brien.
Thought the record did a wonderful job of giving a synopsis of the give and take between planning and the unfortunate owner of the CVS Plaza there, and I thought the, the backend of the article was the most poignant, was that he purchased the property in 95 when it was a vacant AMP, emphasizing the word vacant, and he's brought many businesses in and out of there in addition to the CVS, and he has been a taxpayer. He has been a wonderful corporate citizen. He's allowed the town to take part of the property, to have the new school developed, and he's allowed parents to use it, he's allowed the celery stock to use it, and I believe to the gentleman's comments, he allows parking from, from the theater as well. And to deny him the ability to increase the property's value, to increase the general use of the, of the property for an arbitrary 5,000 square feet and unknown types of businesses, whatever the mayor's vision is, a vacant storefront is not my vision, and you have a businessman who is trying to move ahead and provide a service, and a store that would benefit many people in that area who walk. Not everybody has a car, not everybody can get to the things that everyone else can get to, and by having a business like that, the Dollar General, within walking distance, it increases the convenience and the ability for people to get the things they need. It also is a business. You're going to have a change there with a large rotary being put in, and I, I just don't believe that you're going to be able to turn that into downtown Northampton because you have a vision. I think that when a business owner makes a commitment here, that the town should do everything it can to accommodate, not to, to turn them away and say to them that we're not really interested in your thoughts or in your plans for the property, we're going to go our own way with this and follow some kind of a dream that we have about local little shops that people don't really frequent, I believe, that much anymore. That's a kind of a throwback to a bygone era, but I'm most definitely in opposition to this change.
Further discussion? Counselor Griffin.
So, Todd, thank you for coming this evening. One of the things that I think is a gem to our downtown district is the Majestic Theater, and I think we can build around that in, in the future. That's going to be something that we all behold, you know, we're all beholden to. So, I think, you know, from a parking standpoint, we've got to work through that. I think central business parking is, to your point, has, has been a problem for, for, for many, many years. But one thing that, that I would tell you is that the Majestic Theater and any vision of the Majestic Theater has to be within this general plan and, and for the future. So, thank you for what you do for the city of West Springfield. I am certainly in favor of this, of this proposal. I think, you know, change is sometimes difficult, of course, but the vision should be there, and I think it is there, and I think by approving this, I think we can start that vision.
Thank you for the discussion. Okay. Counselor Eager.
Yes, I'm going to be voting in support of this. I have seen, so, we have, especially Elm Street, and that's where, where I'm, I think the changes are really starting to happen. There is becoming much more walkable. I've seen people walk from my apartment building down to Tandon Bagel and pick up coffee and bring it back. I, we wa, I've watched people walking to and from the Majestic. I've, I've, Bellonopolis and a few other businesses are bringing people in, and the thing is, taking the Majestic's feedback into this, I want to preserve the mixture as much as I can and prevent something that's not really of the character of the neighborhood. That's why I'm voting to support it, because right now, the, the way the lot's configured for these businesses is in your favor, and I'd like to keep it that way. That said, listening to my friends' disapproval of this, I just have to think about how large 5,000 square feet is, and I, I can see a lot of businesses setting up in a 5,000 square foot space, maybe not, maybe not Dollar General, but maybe a 5 and below. Something, something that has a lot of selection, but maybe is more confirming to the area. So I'm going to be voting in support.
Okay, thank you. Other discussion? Case?
If nobody else, I just want to look at it.
Sure.
So, if he decides not to be a good corporate citizen, and decides that since West Springfield is basically closing the door on him, and he limits his parking to CVS customers only, and tells celery stock they have to find another place, and don't drop your kids off in my parking lot, would he be criticized for that by anybody? Or would it be his right to do that in that, you know, he's, he has to keep some semblance of his business and try to figure out what he's going to put in that space now? And they even said, the member said, yeah, business is tough, it's a tough call, goes against the grain, there's often too much red tape, which is a problem, and if there's been a tougher time to be in business in the brick and mortar field, I don't know when, and yet they still voted to approve it. So you're saying on one hand, yes, this is very tough times, and we, we, we think, you know, it's very hard for you, but we're still going to go the way that's going to make it even harder for you, to limit your ability to progress and to move forward. So I hope he doesn't become a poor corporate citizen and tell people to stay out of his lot as a result.
Okay, I just wanted to provide some information for the Majestic or whoever might be listening. There are over 200 parking spaces, 100 yards away, there are municipal parking spaces right around the corner from the Majestic, maybe if we did a little signage, they'd be better utilized. The guy who owns the property at CVS also gets paid to allow the teachers to park there. It's not just out of kindness of his heart, although he probably, I'm sure he, it is when the parents drop their kids off or folks stop in to grab a sandwich, but he does pay for parking, to the, the town pays him so the teachers can park there. And I did want to remind everybody that as Counselor O'Brien mentioned, the planning board voted unanimous favor of this proposal. So they just wanted to send those three factoids out there so everybody had all the information. Any discussion? Okay, ready to vote? All right. Counselor DiStefano.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Vice President Clune.
Yes.
Counselor Eager.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
No.
Counselor Griffin.
Yes.
Counselor Laflambeau.
Yes.
I vote yes, eight in favor, one opposed, the motion passes. Vice President Clune, do you have any HR appointments for us this evening?
I do. I move to approve the appointment of Patricia Murphy to the West Springfield Arts Council with a term to commence on October 4th, 2022, and expire on December 31st, 2024.
Second.
Moving seconded, committee?
We voted unanimous approval for this.
Further discussion? Okay, we go to vote, Counselor Laflambeau.
Yes.
Counselor Griffin.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Counselor Eager.
Yes.
Vice President Clune.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano.
Yes.
I vote yes, unanimous. Vice President Clune.
Move to approve the appointment of Madeline Miller to the West Springfield Arts Council with a term to commence on October 4th, 2022, and expire on December 31st, 2024.
Second.
Moving seconded, further discussion?
Again, this was unanimous approval.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll go to a vote. Counselor DiStefano.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Vice President Clune.
Yes.
Counselor Eager.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Counselor Griffin.
Yes.
Counselor Laflambeau.
Yes.
I vote yes, unanimous, thank you. Vice President Clune, you have a couple more?
Yep, move to approve the appointment of Janet Eckert to the West Springfield Arts Council with a term to commence October 4th, 2022, and expire on December 31st, 2024.
Second.
Moving seconded.
Again, unanimous approval on this one.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, go to a vote, Counselor Laflambeau.
Yes.
Counselor Griffin.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Counselor Eager.
Yes.
Vice President Clune.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano.
Yes.
I vote yes, unanimous, thank you.
Move to approve the appointment of Robert Whitney to the West Springfield Arts Council with a term to commence October 4th, 2022, and expire on December 31st, 2024.
Second.
Moving seconded.
Again, the committee voted unanimous approval.
Any other discussion? Okay, we go to a vote, Counselor DiStefano.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor, Vice President Clune.
Yes.
Counselor Eager.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Counselor Griffin.
Yes.
Counselor Laflambeau.
Yes.
I vote yes. Anything else come before the committee? Did I miss anything? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, it's unanimous, thank you.